Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'd like to open our session. Please rise for the invocation led by Mr. Benton, followed by the pledge led by Dr. Trampi.
Now you head this with me, please. Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for every day you allow us to have. And, Lord, thank you for, please let us all be thankful for the blessings that you bestow upon us daily, and the things you allow us to do in this life. Lord, please watch over this board today as we do your bidding and glorify your name in the works that are presented before us. And, Lord, please be with our citizens and throughout this county. Keep them surrounded by your protective arms in your name and your glory, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. First item is the approval of your agenda. Would like to note two changes to the agenda. First, an addition in the bullpen is a reappointment of Mr. Arthur Snyder to the Transportation Committee representing Livingston District for a term to expire June 28 of 2018. And second is a removal, the public hearing item, CA 17-005, the ordinance amendments relating to off-street parking, loading, and stacking is being pulled and will not, should not be heard this evening. And with those two changes, would ask you, please, to approve your agenda.
Does anyone wish to motion for the approval of our agenda? Any discussion? We'll call the question.
Seven, yes.
Bring us to your consent agenda. May I have the floor computer, please? Consent agenda items for June 27, 2017 are as follows. First is the appointment of Mr. Phil Sullivan, Fire Marshal and Fire Code Official, County. Second is authorization of the sale of 2017 bonds and authorization of public hearing in connection with that sale to be heard on September 12, 2017. Third is the approval of contract with J. King DeShazo III to provide construction services for the Matzrowan Water Treatment Plant roof replacement, a cost of $550,500, which is the low bid. Fourth is a contract to J. L. Kenton Sons to provide construction for the Massaponix Church Road 3R Design Improvements. That's at a price of $798,549.90. Next is approval of contract modification for renewal with Telephone Answering Service, Inc., doing businesses, Hildrup Taxi and Virginia Cab for transportation services for social services. This is the third of four renewals. Sixth is approval of contract renewal with Welch Graham and Ogden Insurance, Inc. for property liability, accident and disability insurance services for Frem volunteer personnel. This is the second of four renewals. Seventh is the approval of a special events permit for the upcoming 2017 Stars and Stripes Spectacular, which will be held this Saturday, July 1. Number eight is to authorize transfer of contingency funds to external legal counsel funding. This is in regard to assessment appeals with a cost of $75,000. Item nine is approval of the Ford AP Hill Executive Steering Committee Memorandum of Understanding. Item 10 is a proclamation requested for the 34th Annual National Night Out, which will be held on August 1, 2017. Item 11 is reappointment to Kenneth Laypen to the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board for a term expiring June 30 of 2020. Number 12, recommendation of appointment for George M. Allen to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term expiring June 12 of 2022. Again, this is a recommendation pursuant to state code, BEZA, as appointed by the Circuit Court. Item 13 is revisions to remote attendance policy for the Board of Supervisors, as recommended by the county attorney, and the additional item, reappointment of Arthur Snyder to the Transportation Committee, Livingston District, for a term expiring June 28, 2018.
Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, number four.
Number four? Anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number four?
No move.
Call the question.
The pulled item was number four, the approval of the contract with J. L. Kenton Sons for construction services from Massaponix Church Road.
I just, I want to refresh. Is this to reconstruct the road from the intersection of 17 up towards the school that we've talked about? I'm, I think it's been a while. I just wanted to refresh, get a refreshment of what we're doing here with this, with, is this a design from that portion of it? Because we have design documents. I thought we had it, design documents. Of course, they've changed since then.
Mr. Skinner, the, this is for the construction contract. What they're going to do is straighten the two S-curves between the school and the intersection, do some shoulder work and some drainage work for that section of road to improve the line of sight.
Ed, I think that's correct. I mean, I know what we're trying to do. And this money is for just the design to do that? Or is this for the construction?
This is for the construction.
Okay. Thank you. That's where I was a little confused. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Skinner, they've already started utility relocation work out there. So the hills cut down. That's the construction that's going on now. This is for the road project.
This has been a 10-year project, almost, down in the Berkeley District. And so I'm glad to see that we're at least getting the construction. Obviously, it's changed from what originally going to be. But thank you very much, Ed. I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome. And that section of Massaponix Church Road is going to be shut down from July 6 until August 29. And that's been advertised, but just to let the public know that that section of road is closed, and there's a detour in place.
Mr. Chair, a motion to approve. Any discussion? We'll call the question.
Seven, yes.
That brings us to public presentation time. Amy, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody that's not signed up to speak that would like to speak to the board at this time? Okay. Got three people. Mary Lou. Thank you. It's good seeing you again.
Well.
Missed you, too.
Mary Lou Collier, Mr. Skinner's district. In Mr. Skinner's district, we need some work done at the T of the railroad track, at Mine Road and Benchmark Road. The two stop bars and stop lettering is faded. We have problems with people even wanting to stop at the stop signs, and some cars are stalled on the railroad track trying to cross the tracks, and people are not stopping completely and obeying the fact that they're supposed to yield to traffic going across the tracks. And two, on Route 1 going towards Massaponix as they exit off a 95 exit, I don't know how many times I've almost had someone sideswipe me. The yield sign on the curb and the no, no, no shoulder is about three feet apart. No allowance for them to stop. That doesn't give them any warning. I was just wondering if they could push the sign back before they get to the yield sign? Because I know there have been accidents there, but it's kind of late to say that there's no, no lane for them to stall before the yield to get onto Route 1. So I would like to see something done about that. And finally, with the holidays coming up, special emphasis on the safety of our police officers because it's, it's a difficult holiday for them to have to man the roads and their safety. I pray and hope you all keep them in your prayers for their safety because some very bad things are happening to our police officers across the country, and they are here to help protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Langridge, would you like to go next?
Good evening, members of the board. Justin Langridge, President of the Spotsylvania Career Firefighters Association. Our office is located at 9835 Courthouse Road, and I'm a voting taxpayer in the Lee Hill District. Two main notes tonight. Public safety hazardous duty employees deserve a 25-year salary spread, and we must ensure a healthy balance of old blood and new blood to ensure the current and future success of your fire and EMS system. Per VRS Plan 2 for Public Safety Employees, a normal retirement age for political subdivision employees eligible for enhanced hazardous duty coverage is age 60. You become eligible for an unreduced benefit at age 60 with at least five years of service credit, or at age 50 with at least 25 years of service credit. There is a reason, a physical reason, that hazardous duty employees are eligible for retirement at age 50 with 25 years of service, and why salary scales should match. It's not impossible to find one, but please take count of how many 50- or 60-year-old firemen you have riding fire trucks. Mr. Benton, how was it? We calculate a total of four individuals that have been employed by Frem for 25 years. If you haven't gone to bed sore or been injured in a while, come out and spend a day burning with us, or go down to the Criminal Justice Academy and do some officer survival role-playing on their mats. A salary range based on 25 years would ensure a fair and equitable compensation range for hazardous duty LEOS employees when compared to their peers. Secondly, it's been noted that there is not a high level of turnover in some of the upper-ranked positions that are far below market. That is because many of these employees have essentially become stuck. They're too far committed to go start over in many cases. You typically don't leave one department and go to another with promoted rank. Some, though, could still leave and make more money, even with less responsibility, just one county to the north. Fair does not always mean equal. Despite past efforts by the board, Frem employees still comprise four of the top five positions off-market. Firefighter medic, 24% below market. Fire battalion chief, 38% below market. Part-time gate attendants, that's not us, 45% below market. Fire lieutenant, 45% below market. And fire captains, 48% below market. These are not anomalies or outlying statistics. These are real systemic departmental issues, and regardless of turnover in these positions, our younger members do recognize that the senior members are not being compensated competitively, and they do take this into consideration. New blood, inexperienced blood, is not always best in this line of work. The average firefighter has been employed for just over four years, and of the roughly 160 employees staffing your fire trucks and ambulances each day, the tenure average is less than six years on the job, including your officers. Experienced firefighters, medics, equipment operators, and knowledgeable, experienced officers are crucial to the success of your fire and EMS system. Much like county staff has worked very diligently to balance this year's pay strategy, please help ensure a healthy balance of old blood and new. The citizens deserve better than a stepping stone department. You've hired a significant number of fire personnel in recent years, and establishing a balance now will impact stability five and 10 years down the road. Thank you to members of the board, Mr. Taylor, your staff, for the work and commitment to the employees and the taxpayers. I think everybody involved might be willing to acknowledge that there are some shortcomings. However, our association also realizes that it would be impossible to fix everything in a single budget year, and we recognize that much effort has gone into trying to provide fair, reasonable, balanced, competitive, and fiscally responsible salary corrections. Gentlemen on the board, please consider and please direct staff on these two issues. A 25-year salary range for all hazardous duty LEOS employees, and your support for an accelerated implementation of adjustments to bring employees more in line with market under a two-year implementation rather than two, or three, and/or direction for possible FY '18 mid-year funding based on any additional recurring revenue availability. Thank you for your support, and thank you for taking us in the right direction.
Thank you. My name is Larry Plating. I'm a former strategic planner with the Central Intelligence Agency, and I live in Cortlandt District and was asked to participate in the 2016 Spotsylvania Comprehensive Plan Cleanup a few years back. Your job, as I understand from your own planning document, is to promote, preserve, and protect the health and safety and general welfare of myself and the other citizens of Spotsylvania County. I, for one, thank you. The majority of your tasks of the board is to provide added value to the citizens of the property owners of this county. That's why you tax us, right? I want to talk about another kind of property, internal property. Founder and planner James Madison said, "Conscience is the most sacred of all property. There is no title to invade a man's conscience, which is more sacred than his castle." Conscience is internal property. There are other aspects of internal property. Internal property are those skills and ideas taught in our schools and the experience gained throughout life. Spotsylvania's school system is responsible, as delegates of the parents, for the education of Spotsylvania children. What they truly learn in the form of skills and ideas is their internal property. It is property that cannot be taken away from them. The type of character a child develops as a result of his early life experience and labor is also the child's internal property. Let's see if we can find a better way to add self-government to our children's internal property portfolio. It will save tax dollars and create better citizens. Our founders also knew nothing of the vain philosophies of Pavlov or Maslow, but they did understand that internal attitudes control external actions. To put it another way, as a man or woman thinketh in their heart, so they are. Wicked tongues and actions come from wicked attitudes and wicked hearts. I know you've seen a few of these in the past months. New topic. When I saw the agenda for the day, I noticed an allusion to a strategic plan with a PowerPoint presentation showing no plan, just the elements with a lot of questions. Is there really a county strategic plan? Then I saw the first five pages of the 20-year comprehensive plan that I actually worked on with future-looking vision statement. In it, I saw many objectives, most of them written in a way that couldn't be easily measured to determine whether they had been accomplished. My question or comment is this: Based on the fact that the plan should be able to be turned into a document to measure progress towards an objective or a series of objectives, how well are we doing as a county? Have the planners measured the goals and given feedback? Plan, do check. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wasn't signed up to speak that would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll close the public presentation. I do believe we missed a photo op after the consent agenda. Is that correct? For the National Night Out?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So if we could have all the board members come down, and anybody that hasn't signed the documents, sign them, and we'll do a photo op.
Takes us to board reports, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
John.
Mr. Sebel.
No report.
Mr. McLaughlin.
No report.
Wow. Mr. Benton?
No report.
Dr. Trampi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to request that staff at a future board meeting brief the board on the effects of the opioid epidemic on county resources. I don't just mean dollars. It's my understanding that some of these substances are so toxic that our first responders are themselves in danger just, just trying to save a, a person who has OD'd, that sort of thing. I'd like to get a report on. So if county admin could survey the department heads to see what effect it's had on each department and get back to the board with that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Paul. I didn't want to be the only one. Anyway, yes, sir, I do have one, two comments. For county administrator Mark, please, if you would. Would you please check, I know the marks that they were talking about on Benchmark Road, I believe it is. I think that's a VDOT project, not a CSX. So if you would check on both of those fours with Sean to see if we can get them redone. And the sign moved on one, even though it's both Smith, Yakubowski, and ours lanes that go down there, to see what they were talking about. And the other thing is, I do want to just make an announcement. It's, never really have done this, but I did get certified prior to the time that was required to. So I will be running for this office as the representative from the Lee Hill District this coming year. So just want to say thank you for the support I've had so far, and hopefully I'll be back next year. Thank you.
And the chair has no reports. Mark, you're up.
Very good. That, that brings us to public hearings, and the one on the agenda is CA 004, ordinance number 23-170, ordinance amendments pertaining to enforcement. Good evening, Jacob.
Floor computer, please. Thank you. Tonight's public hearing, only public hearing this evening, is in relation to ordinance number 23-170 regarding enforcement. Just as a high-up overview, this specific section of the zoning ordinance establishes the zoning administrator as the responsible party for zoning ordinance administration enforcement. As a result of this zoning ordinance focus this evening, we do have Mr. Rick Robertson, who's the deputy zoning administration here, for backup if need be. This section of code is fairly short, and the amendments are short as well. Just first, in terms of recommendation, at public hearing on May 17, 2017, the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission recommended approval of this case with a vote of 7-0, and staff also recommends approval of the ordinance in front of you. The impetus of this zoning update is based in the comprehensive plan, specifically Vision Strategically A5, which identifies the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, and tests staff with reviewing and updating the entire documents. I'm happy to say, over the last few years, we've made tremendous strides in getting through the zoning ordinance. We're slowly running out of sections here, so that's a good thing. There's been a lot of progress. So the proposed amendments before you this evening, again, have to do with Article 9 enforcement of the zoning ordinance. Substantively, we've proposed no deviations from the current zoning enforcement practices that are, and the proposal actually is more based on legal clarifications, the language as it exists. A lot of these ordinances are decades old, and they needed a cleanup. So with legal review, we've had some assistance getting some of those clarifications worked out. Additionally, you'll see some capitalizations for consistency. This is just part of the formatting of the document. Specifically, in Section 23-911, Enforcement Responsibilities, subsection A, the zoning administration enforcement functions have been clarified to include designees of the zoning administrator. That would be zoning office staff that work under the zoning administrator. And in Section 23-911, Enforcement Responsibilities, subsection D, we've referenced, there was a reference to the prohibition of building permits. In speaking with the buildings office and zoning office, as stated in the beginning, this is related to the zoning office, zoning administration, and building permit is, does not fall under that. So it was not appropriate to, to reference building permits in this situation. As a result, we've replaced that reference with prohibition of zoning permit issuance as this is something, a task of the zoning administrator. The last item that you'll see in your packets likely came in clean. Since that point, you see it's now struck through. This is now language that we've proposed to leave as is. Upon further legal review, staff has reverted the language back to the existing language in the zoning ordinance. So the, what I was going to present this evening about removing attempted violations is no longer proposed. The, since the Planning Commission public hearing, as well as after the packet was sent to you all, there was an additional legal review that determined that the proposed changes were probably more harm than good, and we've been requested to maintain that language as is. The only change that you'll see, this evening, we handed out a hard copy of the amendments. On the second page, or the rear side of the page that you have, I've highlighted in blue the specific area in question. The only thing that we've changed is capitalizing the word "chapter" and changing the word "injunction" to "injunctive" in terms of the header of that, that section. So with that being said, that is the extent of the amendments before you this evening, and I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. We'll open up the public hearing portion. Is there, Amy, anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody signed up to speak that would like to speak, or not signed up to speak, that would like to speak at this time? We'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved.
A motion to approve. Any discussion? Call the question.
Seven, yes.
Thank you.
That takes us to presentations, and first up among them is the follow-up on the implementation of the total compensation study. I saw, there's Rose. Good evening, Rose. And Leslie. We have, following last meeting, circulated responses to a variety of questions. Have other information that'll be addressed in Rose's brief presentation. And we have also had the opportunity to sit down with the department directors and review the specific compensation adjustments recommended department by department. That undertaking involves a spreadsheet that is just this big, because this is a copy of it. There are a few minor corrections or changes to be made based on input from the individual directors, but we are still on track to implement the first layer of the compensation changes within the budget of money set aside by the board, which was, Mary, 2.1 million, or nearly 2.1 altogether. There was 1.8 initial, and then $287,000 found at the end of the budget process that was added. So it rounds out to 2.1 million and on track for the implementation in three years, which was what we indicated when the study was first presented. And with that, Rose? Get your mic, please.
May I have the floor computer, please? Okay, so just to kind of provide a little background from the last presentation that we had, we did meet initially on June 15, and we brought before the board a few recommendations related to pay. The first being, we're recommending that the proposed pay scale by Evergreen be adopted. We're also recommending a cost of living adjustment of 1.3%. of 1.3% for any employee who's been with the county at least a year as of July 1. We're also proposing a longevity pay increase. And that would be for any employee that has five years of service to 9.9 years of service would get a 1% increase. Any employee that has 10 years to 14.9 years of service would get a 2%. And then any employee with 15 or more years of service would get a 3% increase. We also are-
And Rose, can I jump in on that point? Because it's important to recognize that the longevity adjustment is proposed as a continuing part of our pay plan. So that in other words, next year, there are certain employees, we were asked about one in a meeting recently with the department director. My employee has 4.7 years of service. They don't qualify, they're not going to get the 5%? That's right, they're not going to get it this year, but it would be recommended. That stays in the plan. Next year, they will have 5.7 years of experience and they will qualify. And it's these small incremental along-the-way adjustments based on longevity that begin to pull apart compression. Next year, part of the Phase 2 implementation of the Evergreen recommendations would be to add other small, and I would perhaps smaller increments also based on longevity, such as, say, half a percent at three years, another half a percent at seven years, another half a percent at 12 years. These targets are based on what we have seen in the overall experience of attrition and turnover in the organization. So we're not just pulling numbers out of the air. We've looked back at Rose's turnover study, picked points along the way where small increments are meaningful and realize from the experience of other pay plans, such as our school division, that these small increments along the way are the keys to undoing compression and keeping employees motivated. Excuse me for interrupting.
And then the last pay increase that we're recommending is the classification date parity increase, which would be the effort coming out of the Evergreen study directly. And that's to bring certain positions to market. The drivers for implementation, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, we're looking at actually addressing compression directly. We're also looking to maintain salaries or bring them to market, which will support our recruitment efforts. And then also looking to build in some additional supports for retention. Okay, so as is related to the compression relief effort, we are looking at the longevity pay increases in addition to kind of what was recommended by Evergreen. So the classification date parity is intended to address compression by looking at where employees fall in their current position on the proposed pay scale. In addition to that, we're looking at building in some longevity pay increases that take into account what an employee's entire service is to the county. And we would be suggesting that not only for this upcoming fiscal year, but then also moving into FY '19 and FY '20. As you see illustrated in this particular graph, and as was mentioned by Mr. Taylor, in FY '18, we're looking at 1% through 3%. That would be an ongoing effort at those different thresholds, five years, 10 years, and 15 years. And then in addition to that, in FY '19 and FY '20, we'll be looking at building in additional pay increases at different increments. And we'll talk about that a little bit more on a future slide. You'll see that actually illustrated in more detail. But there would be smaller increments at, say, like two or three years and then maybe at 12 years. Okay, so this slide kind of illustrates a little more in detail what I had mentioned in terms of the longevity. So, and I know that Mr. Benton particularly was interested in us bringing a three-year plan. So this is our effort to look at a three-year plan. So in FY '18, we'd be looking at a COLA as well as a longevity pay increase of 1%, 2%, and 3% at five, 10, and 15-year thresholds, along with the classification date parity, which is, you know, the market study that was done, Phase 1. So meaning that what's recommended by Evergreen, we would give a third of that this year. And then a third of it in year two and a third of it in year three. In FY '19, we're anticipating a COLA will come in somewhere around 1.2%. Certainly, that's subject to change, but that's what we're anticipating at this point. And in addition to the longevity thresholds of five, 10, 15 years of this year, we'd also be adding in a half percent at year three and then at year 12. And then in FY '19, anticipating a COLA of possibly 1.7% and again, having a similar longevity structure, where at year three and year 12, you'd be giving a half percent increase. And then at year five, 10, and 15, we'd be looking at 1%, 2%, and then 3%. And then giving that final a third for the classification date parity. And then to your far right of the chart, you'll see what we're anticipating in terms of cost for implementing these. So expresses a percent of payroll. So 3.2% in year one, 3% in year two, and then 3% in year three. This next slide actually gives an example of what it would look like for a specific employee. So what we have here is illustrated an eligibility worker. You see their total county service at 5.3 years. Their current salary is 39,434. When you add in the 1.3% COLA, that brings their salary to 39,946. Then if you layer on their longevity pay increase, which would be, you know, an additional 1%, that takes it to 40,346. And then that final salary at 41,382, that's also layering on the classification date parity, a third of that classification date parity. So that would bring this particular employee to a 4.94% increase to their salary. This next example illustrates what it might look like in public safety for a lieutenant. So total county service might be 15.7 years in this particular example. That's the county service. Then the current salary at 64,257, adding in a 1.3% COLA, that takes it to 65,093. Adding on a longevity of 3%, that takes it to 67,045. And then that last salary at 67,173 is with the classification date parity. And then that would take this person's salary, it would give them an addition of 4.54%. As a recap, we're really looking for the board to make a decision today. If we decide that we do want to implement these pay increases, it's really imperative that we come out of the room with a decision just because we're not going to be able to implement these by July 17 without that decision being made. As you could imagine, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes efforts that have been made and would need to be made in order to make sure that our systems are prepared and we can ensure that there's accuracy of processing the appropriate increases for the individuals based on their years of service and their eligibility for the COLA and the classification date parity and so forth. So we're certainly open to any questions you may have. We certainly want you to be in a position to make an informed decision. With that, we welcome your questions.
There any questions from the board? Mr. Benton?
I'd ask for a two-year plan, actually. It wasn't a three-year plan that I asked for. It was to provide you a two-year plan for implementation. And I guess also, I guess with these COLAs, each time we're given a COLA, we're increasing the base salary, right?
That would be correct.
Well, doesn't that, isn't that just compounding the compression issues? When you raise the base salary and you've, say, somebody with 4.99 years of service and they're not going to get any of the other stuff, isn't that just going to make the compression bad?
That individual, that individual would be eligible for the COLA, the example that you gave of the 4.9. They'd be eligible for the COLA, but then certainly in year two, as Mr. Taylor had illustrated, they would be eligible for a longevity pay increase as well. And that particular individual would get, you know, they would get it that year two and they would get it year three. So we believe that that would address some of what that concern would be.
By chance, do you have a two-year plan that I could see?
We certainly can modify the plan that we've-
Or implementation.
Excuse me?
Or implementation in two years instead of three.
We can certainly modify the plan that we have to look at it over two years for you and send that and share it.
All right. I still think, I'm very skeptical. I mean, I'm going to vote to do this tonight because I think the employees need something this year instead of just keep on delaying the inevitable. But I am very, very skeptical of what the plans are. And, you know, Mr. Language speaking today, he did, you know, 51 years old, running those calls and doing the training that we're required to do every day. And it's all physical. I tell you what, at least tried to go to bed without, you know, hurting all night quite a number of times. And it's just, I understand why there's not that many 50 and 60-years-olds. And if there are, I'm sure in this agency, they're on up in rank and maybe not doing the more everyday firefighter stuff. And that goes for, you know, law enforcement also. Instead of running the roads and doing the day-to-day stuff, some of the older ones are, I'd assume, a little bit older and have achieved some rank and maybe not having to do all the running and tackling and fighting and the stuff that happens on a daily basis that wears a man down, or woman, especially when you get on up in age. What is it going to take to maintain this progression every year for our employees of movement? Do we know to where we keep them in line with our plans and what we want as far as movement in their starting salaries, mid-grade and max? That we require 2% every year? For everybody? Or is it going to be, it's going to be off the scales where they can't really answer that question?
Those adjustments should be part of the estimates that are presented in that slide. If you go back to the three-year plan, Rose. And I say that on a, one route to a two-year implementation would be to consider in the out-years either doing less in the way of decompression adjustments that are the small adjustments based on total time in service. But again, those are to affect decompression. The other thing to do would be to forego a cost of living adjustment in one or both years or to reduce the cost of living adjustments themselves down to a, say, half of the published federal cost of living stat, which, I mean, we know that's an artificial formula they use, but that is what is published and stated to the nation is the delta in the cost of living. But we, by, I think it's important to, we've tried hard to be realistic about budgeting cost and out-years and targeting not more than 3%, which is, we recognize, a lot to ask for commitment to payroll. But we, you know, would be happy to look at an alternative vision for years two and three that perhaps would reduce or forego the COLA, reduce or trim the smaller longevity increments and finish Evergreen in two years. If that's of interest. Again, this is a, the plan was born out of listening to a variety of concerns from across the board.
Well, my, I'm sorry. My biggest, when we give these COLAs, though, we're raising, why can't we leave their base salary alone? Leave the base salaries alone, give the cost of living to the employees that are actually working and employed by us. I think Evergreen said our salaries, well, once these adjustments are made, are going to be at market. So leave the dang-on things alone, give the COLAs to the employees, leave the base salary alone so we don't get into the compression issues again.
I think you run into two challenges if you don't give COLAs. The first-
I just said, we give the COLAs to the employees. We do not raise the base salaries.
Right.
That's what we've done all this 20 years. And it's just compressed everything, time and time again.
I think part of your challenge with that is that you'll have difficulty recruiting people because what you'll find is that you will be outpaced with your competitors. So as the staffers and the Fredericksburgs and other people are having higher starting wages, you'll find firefighters and deputies and, you know, IT people and folks gravitating to those other localities rather than to us. We'll have, we have challenges now, quite honestly, in certain positions. The other thing is, is that you'll be challenged when you go to promote people. So if you have that deputy that's going to that next position, you know, sergeant or lieutenant or whatever it is, like, they're going to be challenged because it's going to be a low entry-level salary that they're going into.
It is now. I mean, and we never get to mid-grade. We never get, you've got lieutenants and captains and on and on and on that a starting firefighter can, or deputy or utilities worker can be making because of what we've done all these years. You know, as long as you stay in your grade and don't want to promote and do anything with this county except what you were literally hired to do, you don't want advancement, you're good to go. I mean, you can make it as much as a ranked person or supervisor. So why should I want to, you know? And I think if we're saying we're going to do a market study every three years or whatever we're planning on doing, then we should catch where we're low in the market and we can make those adjustments at that time. Instead of every year, let's bump the starting salary up. Let's bump the starting salary up and, oh, let's do it again, too. And then you, again, you're just compressing everything, you know? I don't, I am, I'm very skeptical of this. Like I say, I'm going to vote to go for at least the first-year part of it. I would like to please, so this is the second request. I want to see a two-year plan, please. A two-year plan. That's what I asked for last time. And, you know, I know there's going to be challenges coming up on this mixed budget with the schools needing their salaries adjusted and their needs and everything else going on. But I at least want to see it and see what it was going to take to get there instead of this squeaking it out. But I am just so skeptical of this. I just, and I do think we need to look at the 25-year for the public safety. That's what retirement is for.
If I could-
It's there for a reason. And I know some employees go where they get 25, we get 30.
Could I clarify?
Be a firefighter.
Could I clarify that?
Police officer, what?
I think it's a really, maybe a helpful point to clarify that the pay ranges are not based on when you retire. Like, it's really a theoretical model, if you think about it. And how it's structured is that it assumes that you start at an entry point and you end at the ending salary and that if you give a 2% increase every year, it takes you 30 years to do it. Now, we all know that we don't give 2% increases every year, and people don't stay for 30 years necessarily. Some of them don't even stay for 25. So I don't want us to get confused. I mean, the pay range really, it's a theoretical model based on that structure, but it has nothing to do with how long people actually work.
Why don't we get rid of them? If it's just a theoretical number out there, why don't we get rid of them?
You're suggesting we get-
Say, this is your starting salary. Maybe one day you'll be able to retire and halfway survive. I mean, literally, I mean, we've advertised a starting salary, a mid-range and a max. And I know of one deputy that made it, but he was on for many, many, many years. And I actually think he's still on as a part-timer. But, and he lucked out with the bumps that we got with the raises and stuff like that. But, and he lucked out with the bumps that we got with the raises and stuff like that. But I don't know of too many others that even got to a mid-range. I just, I.
It's certainly a consideration. We don't have to have classifications. I mean, it's not a requirement. I certainly would endorse and recommend it, but it's not a requirement.
I'm, I'm looking at y'all for, for guidance and stuff like that and for, I don't know. I'm listening to what you're saying, but having lived it for a while with this county, I, it looks to me like we're doing the same stuff that we've done in the past. We just raise, do, do a COLA, but then you raise the base salary and nobody ever catches up and everybody gets compressed with, within, within grade and between grades and everywhere else. I just.
If you go, Mr. Benton, if, if you go back several years, if I may, the county had a similar pay structure to that, where it had grades that took you horizontally up the scale, and then there were steps that went vertically across the scale, one through 30, for 30 years. And each one of those increments were 2%. And at the time, if you had one year of service with, with, with a good performance review, then you got the 2% or 2.5% to go to the next step. And then you got, the, the next year, you got the next 2.5% and you progressed across the scale that way for the full 30 years or 25 years. But what happened, I think, over the years was that we weren't given those merits because of the economy and, and other reasons. So that dropped out and then we ended up with pay bands. And, you know, the maximum that's in each one of those pay bands is basically determined that that is the maximum that that position is worth in market. So that was the reason for the minimum and the maximum, I believe. If I'm, if I'm misspoken, please correct me. But, you know, we had a pay structure that, like that at one time, where the COLA would bring the base salaries up to stay with market, and the merit, if you will, was given as a time in service on, on an annual basis. But as the county went away from that, that's really what got us into the situation where we are today. And, and having that compression, and that occurred over, you know, 12 or 15 years of moving away from that type of pay structure.
And now they're telling us to get away from the steps. In earnest, I mean, all right.
Well, the good thing about merits is that people have some control over that. You know, the level to which you perform, people have individual, you know, they can impact that to some extent. So maybe that would get at some of what your concern is.
No, not really, 'cause the merit, off the evaluations?
Well, based on performance.
Well, that'd be off the evaluations, which.
It would just be negative performance in that case, correct?
Excuse me?
It'd just be negative performance to, pretty much everybody would get it, right?
Yeah, from what I've seen in my, yeah.
We have, we have a handful that.
Yeah, it'd be your negative handful performers, sure.
Yeah, but out of a thousand, well, how many employees we got?
About 1,100.
1,100. And we have a handful that are negative.
Well, I, I will say this, Mr. Benton, that, and, and Mr. Ross, that if, if an employee doesn't perform, they're not with the county very long.
Gotcha.
We don't keep poor performers on board. We, we have.
Right. And I think the issue was, that it was being stated that everybody, you know, performance could help your, your pay increase underneath that old system. And basically, everybody's gonna get, it's not really associated with performance unless it's bad and then they're gone. Right? So, and I, I could see why that went away because you're getting a 2% every year. I'd love a job that would guarantee me a 2% raise every year, plus a COLA. At times, the board would do that. So I'm sure it got too expensive. I don't know the history of it. But I think we're debating the moot right now anyway.
I, I agree. And I, and I'm not at all advocating for that.
Sure.
I'm just giving the history to Mr. Benton as to what was here. And I'm sure he's aware.
All right. I'll, I'll leave you all alone. Thank you.
Yep. Dr. Champy?
The estimates of COLAs in the second and third year, is that based on a forecast of some measure of cost of living, or is that the funds we think will be available?
The, the 1.2 is actually based on, and Mary, you've gotta tell me again what our measure is. But I had.
Urban consumer CPI.
Annual average, all urban CPI, and I had been tracking reports in the news of how that was trending. And based on the, the last quarter trending, the 1.2 is a reasonable straight face estimate of where we'll be next year. And the 1.7, nobody has that good a crystal ball. And we didn't want to come in with an artificially or overly optimistically low estimate. So we threw a dart at the wall and put it there. And obviously, the, the numbers all have to work at the, in the budget. And this is the only thing that is really before you, is the, the FY18 plan with the 3.2% overall adjustment that has been budgeted. We just need authorization to move ahead with that. And in out-years, we're gonna be tracking very carefully, you know, looking at what the CPI is, how the pieces fit together, what adjustments are appropriate to best address compression and move ahead toward completion of Evergreen in the, in the best timeframe that we can. And if the COLA, for whatever reason, does not make sense in that, I'm open to throwing that overboard in the interest of getting decompression adjusted and, and Evergreen implemented. And, and realizing that in practical terms, we will only have so much money to work with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLachlan.
So, a quick one. So I think we're essentially, we're, we're here to approve 18, as it is right now. And as I think you mentioned before, you, we own the software, so we can tweak this along the way if we need to make adjustments based on user feedback and all that. So the one question too, and I think is, we're implementing one-third of the recommendation today. The question really that Mr. Benton was asked, we're really talking about either doing the entire 66% additional in 19, or spreading over 19 and 20. Could you give us, I mean, you don't have, we should not be able to give that estimate. How much is, would we have to budget 19 to do the full 66%? Or what the actual dollar cost would be in, you know, 19 and 20? And then the question is, I mean, this is really, we've generally been giving about a 2% COLA year over year.
Yeah. In order to implement 100% in the first year, we need another million dollars.
Right.
So basically, we're taking, we would, we're taking that million dollars in round numbers and splitting it out over year two and three. So we need another $500,000 in year two and another $500,000 in year three, on top of any COLAs, longevities and anything.
Yeah, but you're going past this question. In order to move year two to year three, or year three to year two, we would need an extra half million in year two.
Right. So another million dollars total in FY19 to implement the full study within the two-year period?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On top of any COLAs or longevities.
Right. So assuming we went with a 2% COLA, as we've been giving, it would cost another million dollars to implement the full study in FY19. Or $500,000 on each of the two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, just to clarify that, and that is, we'd need an additional $500,000 next year, which would make it a million dollars. Okay? So here's my concern too. First of all, is that.
That's not exactly right, because the 500 that we're giving this year will be part of their annual salaries.
Right.
So we, on top of that, we would need another million dollars.
Well, you just said, we, what, he was, what, what Mr. McLachlan was asking, what do we need in 19 budget? We are, if, if, if we were implementing this in thirds, correct? A third this year, a third in 19, a third in 20?
Yes.
Okay.
If we do it in thirds, we need another $500,000 next year and another $500,000 the year after that. If we combine it all into year two, we need a million dollars next year.
That's right.
On top of any COLAs or longevities.
Well, I, I see. But the planned, we already had it planned for $500,000 next year. To change it just two years, an additional 500 on top of that 500, which makes a thousand, a million dollars.
To, to go to two years, we need an, an additional million dollars next year.
Okay. So the budget now, what, what you're saying is, in 19, you have planned $500,000.
In 19?
In 19, just.
In 19, on the three-year plan, we, we would, we would be looking at $500,000.
And in order to make it two years, we add another five, which makes a million. So just so we clarify that. Okay. First of all, I'd say this. Evergreen, I, I wanna make sure that Evergreen, what we're trying to do is parity, pair up our, our jobs with other jobs in localities, correct? I mean, that's what we're saying, is, is do that.
To market, yes.
Okay. So if we do it over three years, and we're not the only county around here that has this problem, that is trying to make the jobs, you know, fair and keep their people in the locality, what, have we taken into consideration, or we've just left that out, the fact that there are other localities gonna be increasing their pays and stuff like that over the same time? So I would prefer.
They absolutely are. We, I mean, Leslie could speak to this more directly, but recently, I mean, Fredericksburg has already implemented their pay study. Stafford has already implemented their pay study, and we're getting studies all the time. King George is, is in the process of, of doing a pay study. You know, so, so the question, the answer to your question is, yes.
So you're telling me at the end of three years, we're gonna have the same parity? Or we're gonna be, we're, it's, it's, our, our goal is to make the, the jobs equal throughout our localities here?
Well, it's to make this competitive.
Well, competitive or quality. And we know what their job's gonna be when, three years out, what they're gonna be paying at King George, what they're gonna be paying at, at Stafford, City Fredericksburg?
That's not, that's unknown.
I, I, I just, I don't understand how we can, because we're, you know, everybody wants to keep the quality people. And I know that Stafford is doing a good job of that and they're, you know, that's why people wanna go towards north, 'cause they pick up extra bucks doing it. And when we do it over a three-year period, I don't care what the study says, I don't see how you implement a really good parity vice over two, let's put it this way, over two years, there's less of a chance of having a delta larger than what we thought or planned it might be in three years. I just don't see how you can do that. So I would say number one is, I think a two-year plan that you asked for is, is, I think we should look at that. And the fact that you're asking us to approve something tonight, and we didn't see the two-year plan, and the way I look at it is, if we come back and meet it tonight, we can always make these changes and make them retroactive, can't we? I mean, can we or can we not do that? Because I think we're, we're smarter knowing what our options are and what our alternatives are. Not to make extra work for you, but, you know, to have these in front of us to choose, because really, I'm in favor of a two-year plan if I can do it, because I don't want the delta in, in the two years to be more, it's gonna be less than it would be at the end of three years. I just, I don't see it happening. So why wouldn't we be able to make them retroactive and give us a chance to look at a three, a two-year plan? What you guys come up with?
I think you could probably accomplish that without making it retroactive. I think you could make a decision on what you wanna do in FY18, and then we can look and still look at a two-year plan. But we can go ahead and push through and start processing for FY18. And the reason that, you know, I'm, I'm asking that we kind of think about the, the retroactive is that there's, that's fraught with concern, just because we have VRS, you know, things that have to be put in place. There are business rules for that. It's, it's highly problematic and open to human error when you start retroactive, making things retroactive. So I, I mean, I would caution in doing that, and I would have great concern in doing that. As well as we're gonna open ourselves up to potential fees and things that we have to pay at a VRS if we don't do those timely and that type of thing. I mean, as it is right now, we're, we're going to actually have to be contracting with someone to help us with processing the increases, because of like some of the, and this is a lot of like behind-the-scenes, back-office stuff that I don't wanna bore you with. But I guess all that to say that when you're processing a very unique increase for a large quantity of people, it's not like you're going out and doing it across the board 2%. It's almost unique to every single individual. So you have to build in software for that, and that's gonna have costs. And if we start building in retroactive and all that, it's, I would be concerned about whether or not that's gonna become very costly or open to human error.
I, I, I would say this and that, and this is no disrespect, but I know there's a few board members that say, here's all this information, and we, we don't have all the information, especially what was asked for by Mr. Benton, okay? I wanna ask you this question too. And, and you, you know, that's okay. I, I see what you're saying, Rose. I understand, and we can correct it in the second year if we wanna go to a two-year plan. Okay? And, and maybe that's what you've just said. So go ahead and implement it tonight, and then let's see what we can do to your plan. But to me, we, we, we have to be more, we, we have to be prepared to give us this maybe beforehand or when he came up. The question I had for you too, in the last presentation, it was yours, Mr. Taylor, or whoever did it, was the one about the senior firefighters? And I asked, why aren't we giving them a raise? And I said, it's so important to keep the senior firemen around for one, two reasons. One is their experience, and number one, two is so people below them can think they can get up to that position and actually have a change. Because isn't retirement based on your last repayment, three pays?
It's your last three highest.
Three highest payments, exactly right. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, and I didn't hear anything tonight, that answer. So I, I don't know if there is an answer to that or not. There, when we were going through the, the formula last time, I believe that's what we went through, and that formula had left senior, I thought it was firefighters, that were not getting an additional, I don't know if it was, maybe it was longevity or something of that nature.
By senior, do you mean long-term? Like someone who's been here for multiple years?
Yeah.
Because anyone who's been here for three, five, whatever the increments are, they're gonna get those additional increases. Those, that is exactly what that compression calculation is doing.
Anyone who's been here 15 years will get a 3% adjustment on top of a 1.3% COLA. And, and on top of that will be any market adjustment.
If the position calls for that.
If the permission, if the position called for that under the, under the Evergreen study.
If, if I may, Mr. Skinner, your question, we, we had a proposed longevity chart at the original presentation that had an additional 1% for 20-plus years. And we reduced that to 15-plus. And I believe you asked what it would cost to keep the 20-plus 1% longevity.
I believe that was correct. So did I get an answer tonight on that? I don't think I did.
Mary, you have.
Unless you presented it again in this presentation.
But Mary, you had that number.
I can, I can give it, I can calculate it real quick for you, put that back in.
And while we're waiting, if, if I may, Mr. Skinner, your, your concern about implementing this over three years and falling behind market in that three-year period, the reason for the COLA each year was to make that adjustment so that we could stay with market. That was the reason for the 1.3% COLA in 2018, because if you recall, the data that was used in the study is already a year behind. So that 1.3% COLA was to bring us up with market based upon that CPI. And that's why there's a COLA built into 19 and 20, so that in those years, we don't fall behind market.
Well, I will tell you that, excuse me, but I agree that we need a COLA. I'm sorry. That's the only way we're gonna keep people here. Okay? And, and whether it compresses or not, you know, the fact is, the reason we got rid of, rid of STEPS, you're absolutely right. STEPS were in the schools too. And what STEPS were for is people knew that if they stayed with this county, whether it be in the school district or whether it be in the employment of this county as firefighters, they knew at so many years, they could reach this pay scale. And what happened was, we really got low on the money during that time. And that's when they froze STEPS. Now, I don't know sure what we did here, if we froze them, or just got rid of them, but the schools froze them. So some people were there five, six years without a step, okay, and could never get out of it. And so that's, that's the thing behind the STEPS. I, I personally think STEPS are good, because if I have a person that comes in maybe 2,000 starting salary less than, let's say, Stafford or the City Fredericksburg, they can look at their STEPS and know that in 20 years, they're gonna be at a certain range that they wanna be at. And, and we sort of, you know, that's the way we guaranteed them. And it could get them in lower and get the quality and train and keep them here. So, and, and that's all funds. I mean, I agree with you, 100% that, and, and that's when we, we, you know, we gotta think of how we keep our people in it, with the same amount of money we bring in every year. We just can't do that.
Right. And, and that's exactly what we're proposing here in the three pieces. The COLA is to stay pace with market. The longevity is to try to get, address the decompression that's happened over all those years, where there were no. uh, where there were no, uh, salary adjustments, uh, for employees that were here several years, uh, so that an employee coming in the door was making the same as an employee that had been here five years. So that's what we're trying to do with the longevity piece. And then the third piece of this is to adj, uh, adjust the, uh, date parity for time in grade, if you will, or time in position. Um, because those, uh, positions where, uh, employees had been doing the same job for that long period of time, uh, they were also being pushed, uh, if you will, from the lower end of the pay scale, and that we're falling behind market because of the lack of COLA over the years. So it, it, it seems to me that, i- as we move forward, particularly with a two-year or three-year plan, that you would want to consider keeping the COLA to stay with market. Um, that you would want to add some additional longevity steps in there so that a long-term employee knows, uh, if they stay here five years, they're going to get 1%. Uh, then when I hit the 10-year mark, I'm going to get 2%. And if we add the longevity, uh, steps, uh, that's proposed in FY18, then an employee that's been here three years, uh, is going to hit the 0.5%, um, and then when they hit five years, they're going to get 1%. And then when they hit 10 years, they're going to get another 2%. So that addresses that piece of it. And then the classification date parity, uh, based upon Evergreen, when we catch everything up, we'll have the software, uh, and we'll be able to do those analysis on a more frequent basis, quite frankly, than every three years, so that we don't have to take these big chunks, uh, you know, in the future. And we can go ahead and move along annually, if you will, so that we can keep pace with all three of those phases of the pay plan.
Here's a question, and, and I'm talking about that, the 1.3% you're talking to keep the parity at the end of three years, and that's what you said?
The, the 1.3% is basically because the, the recommendation for this year, it's based on the, uh, the published CPI, and the data that was used was already a year old in the Evergreen. So based upon that CPI, we've already fallen 1.3% behind, um, market based on that CPI. So you're right, if we don't give a COLA in year two or year three, we're going to be, based upon these projections, 2.9% behind in year three if we don't do the annual COLA. So it's built, it's built into the plan so that we can keep pace, uh, with inflation and keep pace with the market, even if we implement the classification date parity over three years. Or in year two, the 1.2% COLA is built in so that we can keep the pay scale with market.
I, I guess, again, when I'm talking about that 1.3, which I, I think what you said, Ed, is good, excellent. I just want to make sure I understand, the 1.3 is what you've based it on to keep us so that parity at the end of three years would, you know, you said you did the studies. You've got the studies from King George, you got the study from City Fredericksburg and Stafford. I'm saying, if we give 1.3% increase, or let's just say, what happens if Stafford, which has much more money and collects more money, gives a 2%? I mean, we don't know that, but yet that's what you're telling me, the studies are telling you, that the 1.3 is going to make that, I mean.
Well, I think we're, we're looking to be competitive, we're not necessarily looking to be equitable. I don't know that we're going to be in a position to have salaries that are the same as Stafford or the same as someone else. But we want to at least be comparable, is what I would suggest. You know, just like we're competing with, we could be competing with Prince William, we could be competing with Fairfax. We know we're never going to have salaries like theirs, but we want to at least be able to compete.
Okay, thank you.
Skinner, to answer your question, to add that additional, um, 4% at 20 years, is $90,000.
Mr. Sebula.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this has gotten to be a, a little bit confusing. We have, we, you, our staff has put together a plan and presented it to us, phasing it in over three years. And my first question is, why are we phasing it in over three years? Is it because of budget? Yes, and I think I know the answer to that, but I want to hear it said.
The answer is yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, part, I'll say part of it is budget, and other part of it is that the, the Evergreen study itself did not include total time in service longevity adjustments. And the board, in multiple comments since the Evergreen study was presented, has supported the concept of total time in service adjustments as a worthwhile addition to the plan. In order to make room for the addition, the addition of the total time in service adjustments, that was one of the, we can't spend, so yes, it is a matter of money, but we needed to work in total time in service longevity adjustments. We also made a decision early on to work in the COLA adjustment. And so, you know, when the, the phrase is tossed out, well, the City of Fredericksburg or King George or Roy Rogers' horse is implementing their study, we don't know. First of all, we're implementing at 100%, and I want the employees to know this, you know, how much is good enough, we are implementing over three years 100% of what Evergreen recommended. And we are doing it with a COLA so that no positions get left behind. And we are doing it with the longevity increments added, a couple, a sprinkling of them in the first year, and program an intention to add a sprinkling of them in year two and year three that will solve, we expect, the, uh, compression problem, and that will give the, the full relief that the study recommended. So it's, yes, money is a driving factor, but also fairness to our employees, protection for the organization against inflation over time, and addressing the, the longevity, uh, the desire to address longevity that the board, uh, made, and Mr. Skinner, to the $90,000 for the, the 20-year. One of the reasons, money was a factor in, in pinching a bit of a penny there to fit everything in. The other thing is the five, 10, and 15 years, and I think I said this at the last presentation, those do reflect or work with Rose's attrition or turnover factors or turnover experience. The 20-year adjustment, not to, not to take anything away from it, but it really is more simply an award for seniority. I think the comment was made earlier by one of the public speakers or one of the departmental people, once you've been here for 16, 17, 18 years, you're not going anywhere. So we don't have a turnover issue, and I don't want the board to think we have a turnover issue with 20-year employees. It would be nice to give them something, but fitting the, fitting the, the whole plan into the budget available, we are where we are.
So, so then to, to kind of, kind of sum up what I'm trying to say here is, we're taking care of time in grade and time in service like we talked about when, when we were in the military. And, and we need to do that, we've, we've been remiss in not doing that, okay? We're, we're talking about COLA. And, and it looks like we're going to have to adjust COLA every year, just like it's adjusted at the federal government. COLA is going to need to be addressed every year. So, once we do the time in grade and time in service improvement, then annually, we'll do COLA adjustments. And then we have one other factor that, that's not been brought up as yet, and that's merit increases. Now, that's for performance. And, and we need to, we need to take that into consideration as a part of our overall pay structure. Now, I know we're not dealing with that tonight, but that's part of the package, and it has to be a part of the package, or else we're not, we're not doing right by our, by our employees. So we're implementing this over three years for budget reasons. We could do it all this year if we had all the money in the world, uh, it would seem like. But we've got to start someplace. And this is where we're starting, uh, ladies and gentlemen, and, and, uh, uh, we're set up to, to do an increase for employees, uh, effective, uh, July the 17th. And we've got to get moving on this, so, um, I'm not going to say it yet, but I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to, to approve what's being presented to us.
Thank you. This current year's budget, that, well, the budget that starts, um, July 1st, how much money did we budget for this program?
2.1 million.
We budgeted 2.1 million?
Yeah, we budgeted what was equivalent to a 2.5% increase. And then we, you guys added about 374,000 at the end of the budget processes, processed for a total of about 2.1 million dollars in round numbers.
Okay, and so then if we implement it in two years, it's going to take another million dollars next year. Uh, did we cut our budget to find that 2.1 million? Or were those new dollars?
The, um, 2.5% was part of Mr. Taylor's recommended budget.
Right.
Correct, but from the previous year's budget, did we cut that budget to find those dollars to implement this program?
When we develop the base budget in any fiscal year, we go back and recalculate every line to the best of our ability. There were reductions in some lines that would have helped to support that. Um, you probably would not have seen it as an, as a specific cut, but, um, things like turnover, um, where our salary, salaries have changed, and we, we start from scratch with those, so there were reductions in some areas that would have helped to fund that. But there were, there was not a specific process where we sat down with you all and cut things out to address that.
Right, so-
But we always, we always, the base budget you get has been cut and cut to the best of our ability before it gets here, yes, sir.
Well, I understand that, but, but my point being is that from year to year, our budget increases every year.
Yeah, we added additional staff this year.
Correct, yeah, so we're not-
On top of funding the, uh, cost of living. So there were other items that added to that budget increase this year.
Right, and so, and so my point, what I'm trying to get at here is, is that, um, and I said this last time, it's, it's very frustrating that this was not discussed in February, March while we were doing the budget of the entire program and the, everything that we had to do. And the reason I say that is because there's this, there's this division mindset in this county, and, and with some, that we, the county, have the dollars, and we therefore will do what we believe is best on the county side. But then when it comes to the school side, cut your budget, find the money, you can figure it out, it's somewhere in there. And yet, we get the new dollars, and we put it into the things that we believe are necessary, which I believe are necessary to increase, um, our salaries on the county side. But in doing this, what we are setting ourselves up for is an increased baseline budget that we are buying into for next year and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. And we all know that the schools are going to come to us next year with their $7 million Evergreen study, and it probably will increase from that. And will this board then at that point say, yes, we are going to help you implement that over three years? If our, if our budget increased the same amount from 15 to 16, or I'm sorry, from 16 to 17, as it's doing from, uh, this year to next year that we used as a budget, do we have the dollars in there to implement our pay increase, their pay increase, and everything else that is mandated that, that, um, we have for our carryover funds and all? Are there the dollars that actually exist? Because if not, we are then telling, we, we have two options, basically, that we don't continue on with the plan that we have, have put into place. Uh, we have no new hires. Uh, we tell the school system next year, tough, take a hike, figure it out, go, go dig into that reserve budget that's down to, uh, you know, barely enough to continue on, that they don't have the ongoing money. So where is the money coming from, is what it comes down to? I'm not against it whatsoever. This is me talking to the rest of the board. How are we going to do this? There's a mindset out there that we cannot and should not find any new forms of revenue. But yet, we are sitting here, and I've heard not one person speak against increasing our budget over the next three years, just on our side. And then, if we do not do it for the schools, I think that would be, that would just be absolutely wrong. We are not a divided government, the school system is part of the county system. We need to stop with this mindset of us and them. Either we do it because our employees deserve a pay increase, and you know what, their employees deserve a pay increase too. So I'm fully behind it, but I, I think this date should be noted, uh, when next year's budget comes up. And how do we pay for all of the things that we have already committed to and are coming before us? Thank you.
Could you go to example one for me? Nobody else has any questions, do they? Question, so, again, I, I think it would have been helpful upfront, so, uh, we're addressing, I think Ed started to cover it, we're addressing two issues. One is the Evergreen study and getting our pay to a level that the study said would be competitive. And the other is pay compression or longevity. So in this slide right here, I think the, the current salary, that could have been, that's, and this person has 5.3 years of service, but in this case, is it true that someone could have one year of service and have the same salary? That's in the county, if there were no COLAs given in the last five years, I know there were, but-
Hypothetically, yeah.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, yes, the current-
Or, or a certain period of time that could have happened too, when we weren't giving COLAs. And that did happen over time, so there, there are people in the county that might have 10 years of service right now that are getting paid the same as somebody with six, or 15, the same with somebody that has 10, correct?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's caused the issue. I think it's good for the public to know that issue. And, um, Mr. Sebula brought it up. In the military, if you enlist in the military and you do four years, you can get out as a sergeant, and you might become a second lieutenant, and your pay scale is going to be different than a second lieutenant that went to college. You're actually going to get more because of those four years. So you could go, go to, uh, the three-year plan slide. So again, this goes back to, I think, what Mr. Skinner, so everything that we have, and again, this board can only commit to this year. So, one thing that I, so we could do this plan, and it's a good plan to go for in the future. But my concern too is I've heard a lot of people here talking about getting right and pay and being equal, but nowhere, and I heard Mr. Taylor said we were focused on retention, but I don't see that as a supervisor making a decision. So it looks like we're going to get pay increases for longevity this first year at 5, 10, and 15. Now, if I have 15 years in service right now, am I going to get the 1% plus another 2% plus another 3%? I would just get one, but if I stayed here, uh, if I had five, I'm going to get, as I proceed forward, I would get each one of those things. So the, the pay scale's not going to be, be decompressed. It'd be nice to see it decompressed. Are you sure you have the, the deltas between the COLAs and the longevity, correct? Or you feel pretty accurate in that? Because one is addressing pay compression, and one is paying, getting us right with the market, and I don't see retention rates. For me, it'd be great to see a couple examples of a $40,000 salary going through from, from zero to, uh, to 20 years. And added into that, so in our, in our second-year plan, you've got a pay increase for longevity at 3, 5, correct? 3, 5, 10, 12, and 15. It'd be nice to see the retention in those bands, just to make sure. I'm sure you guys did your research, and I, I thank you for the work you did, but as, as making a decision, it'd be great that I'm not seeing, as I think, uh, Mr. Taylor said, if there was a 20 here, it'd probably be pretty good retention. 15 might be pretty good too. And again, we, uh, represent the taxpayer too in this, we want to get it right. We, and we're having some good years, that's great, but we might have another recession. And in those, we will be putting ourselves in the same bind that happened when you got a 2% raise every year from 1 to, to 20, uh, as, as longevity step. So basically, if I'm looking at this, I, it's almost like step increases at 3, 5, 10, 12, and 15. With that, so they're not a step every year, but in a way, it's like a step, but less steps. I, I think that's a great idea.
Well, and they're two different sizes, some of them are 1% steps and others are half percent steps.
Yep.
So there's the, the, in other words, at 15 years, the 3% at 15 years is the, the com, the, the, the total of the 1% for five years, plus the second percent at 10 years, plus the third percent at 15 years.
And that's on the first one, but in the second one, we take it down to 1%. So that's our phased-in approach.
Right.
For 15, for 1% for 5, 10, and 15. So it would be good for me to see an overlapping of those retention rates that we have. Because I don't, you know, I think we've got the best county employees in the world, but I don't want to give them, you know, at taxpayer expense, something that we don't need. If we're retaining a hundred percent of our employees, then we're doing, we've probably got a pretty high pay raise, no matter what the studies say, because a study is just a study, right? And where we can blend this in, I like the three-year plan myself, because then we can see how it's going. Maybe it's not enough and we need to adjust it and make it more. Or maybe it's too much and we've got green across the board, and then we can make it less, Mr. Taylor.
Well, and one of the challenges, just so that you know that this is more art than science.
Sure.
So to incentivize retention for employees that we have turnover issues with, and there are several departments where that's a problem, several positions where that's a problem. And you see the pattern that says most employees are, there are an unacceptable number of employees leaving at somewhere between year two and year four.
Right.
Do you give an increment at year three, at year five, at year two? You know, where do you?
Well, here's a question for you. Can you make different pay scales for different areas? Are we stuck with one pay scale?
You, it is hypothetically doable to make a different pay scale for each department. I think where we're trying to change a corporate culture, if you will, that goes from a context where we have had no longevity increases or steps or increments at all to one where we're designing, you know, the road to individualized charts and scales is fraught with the peril of the divisiveness between the haves and the have-nots, and why did they get this, and I got that, and why are, who's being treated better or worse?
Well, that's kind of like aviators and combat engineers and...
That can happen, sir. So for organizational cohesion and the morale of the workforce as a whole is extremely important, in my mind, as we're working through this transition. And this is also an issue that the team and I argued about. If you wonder what we've been doing the last two months with this, there have been a lot of different layers to it. It's important in this early, and we can refine as we go, and that's part of the power of doing this in increments over three years, to be able to fine-tune these longevity increments to see, you know, these three targets, the first three hits at five, ten, and fifteen are whole one percents for a reason. And that is to put goals or objectives out in front of the employees to say, look, we have a heart for you. We want to retain you. We want, we've set these goals up in front of you, please work to them.
Okay, well, again, I think it's a great job you have done. I would just like to see the retention rates at those years of service for the next time you come back, as well as a matrix that actually has some examples of what those salaries would be, Mr. Benton.
All right, on example one, let's pretend, and I think we have plenty of employees out there and probably in this...
Floor computer, please, Rose, can you?
At least, at least not too many years back, let's say the starting salary is thirty-nine, four thirty-four. He's been on for, he or she, has been on for five point three years. How much of a, they're getting four point nine, four percent, almost five percent increase, right? What's the total COLA increase?
One point three percent.
Where they're getting a COLA the first year, second year, and third year. So wouldn't the COLAs be like four point two percent?
Well, this is, this is just year one. This example illustrates what would happen in year one. So it's the one point three percent COLA, and then the one percent longevity, and then anything additional from the evergreen study, a third of that.
That would be one-third of what evergreen. The delta between the salary with the COLA and the longevity, and the salary with the COLA longevity and classification date parity, that difference is what one-third of the evergreen is recommending. I'm sorry, we applied the COLA, and then we applied the longevity, and then we, then we applied the classification date parity based upon what, based upon the delta after the COLA and after the longevity is added for the evergreen piece. Because the COLA and the longevity is also addressing evergreen's analysis.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, sir. Just the last question, Mary, you said it was ninety thousand dollars to go at four percent at twenty years. Is this, so what we're voting on out does not include that?
No, sir, that would be the one, two, and three percent increases, with three percent being the highest at fifteen years. Anyone above fifteen years, including people that have been for twenty years, would get the three percent.
Say that one more time, please.
Anyone who's been here fifteen years or more would get a three percent increase, including those people that have been here twenty years. Anybody who's been here more than fifteen years.
And when it's slackened, would be the longevity percent?
No.
That is the longevity increase.
That is the longevity adjustment.
So somebody with, somebody with fifteen or more years is getting three percent for their longevity, whether they've been here sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Nineteen, twenty-five, thirty-two.
And so that's, that's one percent a year?
No, they're getting a total of three percent in year one.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sebula.
Yeah, just a quick question. I had, this question was brought up to me a couple times over the last two weeks. And it dealt specifically with an individual at the five-year threshold who was not getting a COLA, and they wanted to know why. So I do...
Not getting a COLA?
That they would not, that they would not get a, an adjustment. They were not going to get a COLA because they had less than five years.
It's possible that they wouldn't be getting a longevity pay increase. Everyone's going to get a COLA that has at least twelve months of service as of July one. The longevity pay increase does begin at five years.
Then there must have, yeah, that must have been the misunderstanding, but I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Next year, it's a three-years of service, correct?
Yeah, they would, we're proposing that they would get a half percent.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? We'll call the question.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Good effort. Mary, don't leave.
I'm not, just switch chairs here.
No problem.
If I can get out of that chair.
While Mary's getting set up, I will remind, I want to let the board know that I had not forgotten the board's desire to minimize business on tonight's agenda in order to make time for discussion of the item that will be coming up next, which is the strategic plan session. However, I couldn't in good conscience leave this item off, this item being the update on the status of the financial management, real estate, and personal property system upgrades we affectionately know as One Solution, because a primary objective of the organization between now and deadlines at January 1st and July 1st of 2019 is the implementation of the One Solution system for our financial management, real estate, and personal property systems. We are finally, at least in a plan, to get off of our antique AS400 system and move on to a single computer system for our general government functions. It is an enormous undertaking and a target that we need to hit. We have prodigious brain trust here at the county. When my department directors meet with me together in the room, we represent nearly four hundred years of local government experience. There's a lot of institutional knowledge in those department directors, many of whom are or will be qualified to retire by the time we have One Solution implemented. I need their experience and want their experience and institutional knowledge about how we do business to make sure that this transition and implementation of the new system goes well. It's critical that we get this done, get it done right, and get it done on time. Because if we miss the deadlines, there's no such thing as three or five months late. The best practice would be to roll over to the next following year. So if we don't hit January 1st of 2019, we would move to January 1st of 2020 and July 1st of 2020. Mary has a presentation on where we are with this effort, and I will let her get to that, but I needed to say a word about the criticality of this toppest of priorities.
Thank you. Floor computer, please. Tonight, I've prepared a few slides to update the board on three of our key legacy systems. As Mark noted, the financial system, the real estate system, and the personal property system. In the computing world, the term legacy typically refers to an old method or an outdated computer system. As you can see on the slide, the real estate and personal property systems were implemented over twenty years ago, and the financial system was implemented seventeen years ago. I want to point out, though, even though these three systems are old, we have made revisions to each of these since their initial implementations to ensure that the systems contain accurate data, they function properly. Many of these changes or workarounds have been implemented over the years or what we refer to as shadow systems, such as Excel spreadsheets, which have been created by staff to meet specific needs. And I'm happy to report that while the workarounds may not create the most efficient system, the systems are functioning and they contain accurate data. And staff's goal is to ensure with the highest level of confidence that the county's financial data remains accurate. All three of these systems were implemented on what is referred to as the I-Series platform. That platform is designed to support heavy transactional, transactional, excuse me, transactional systems, such as financial systems. However, the talent it takes to support these systems is difficult to hire or outsource, which is why the county is moving to a client-server-based system. Both the real estate and personal property systems were written in-house. The staff most familiar with these in-house developed systems are long-tenured employees who are eligible to retire soon or actually will be eligible in the near future. The original developers of the systems are long gone, and the mainframe programmers are quickly becoming a thing of the past. Moving these three systems to the client-server-based platform will allow us to attain adequate support for the system so that we can ensure that the systems are reliable, sustainable, and flexible, not only through implementation, but through the life expectancy of the upgraded systems. A little background about the value of these three systems and the role they play in the day-to-day operations of this county. The real estate and personal property systems manage the billing and collection of more than sixty-four percent of the general fund revenue. The financial system supports the annual budget, both the analysis and the reporting, the payroll, accounts payables, accounts receivables, all of our reporting, fixed assets, our bank reconciliation, and our procurement. Since these three systems were initially implemented, there have been both regulation changes and additional requirements, some of which didn't even exist when the systems were initially implemented. Things like special tax districts and set-asides, they are handled manually now. State-mandated changes to the PPTRA, to changes to our personal property classifications, changes to the GASB, or Governmental Accounting Standard Board, regulations that impact both how we account for things and how we have to report on them. There's been increases in both the types and the number of miscellaneous receivables, and then increase in the number of things like rollback taxes and prepaid taxes, again, both of which are currently handled manually. It's important to note that while systems of this nature generally have a useful life of between seven to ten years, staff has been able to more than double the useful life of these systems.
So if we just close the government after your adjournment tonight, we can have this new system on by January 1st of 2018, and we could open again, but we won't have any county services from now until the end of December. But that's not an option. So we've got to have this brain transplant while we're continuing to serve the community.
Yes. This chart that I have open on the screen now is a draft form, but it's a good graphic to better understand the magnitude of the financial system upgrade and the many people who will be involved in that one project. Some of the key players are here tonight. Mr. Taylor is our project sponsor. The steering committee consists of Rose, the HR director, Larry, the treasurer, Jane, our chief information officer, and myself, and the project manager, John Wood, and the business owner, Becky Foye, our controller. The orange and the purple boxes at the bottom in this section here show each of the modules that will be involved. Each module will have a team lead and team members, and some people will serve both as team leads and team members, because these modules all are integrated and work together. Each module will require project planning, analysis, design, data conversion, testing, and finally, end-user training for employees in all of the county departments, because all county departments will use this software for their daily work. There are a few objectives I'd like to point out of what we're trying to accomplish with the financial system project. First and foremost, the replacement of the legacy I-Series platform. Secondly, the reduction of shadow systems, which I've spoken to. This new system will provide improved reporting. It will implement automated approval workflows. It will establish employee self-service, provide online financial document management. We will develop a formal system governance policy for this system, and we will establish a post-implementation improvement committee, which will ensure that we are able to expand the useful life of the new system to another fifteen or twenty years. That is our goal. The project, we are replacing ten modules, and we are adding eleven new modules with this system. So next steps, the county, to the board's credit, the county staffing is lean and efficient. However, when we are implementing multiple projects that impact the same key staff, it is a strain on the daily operation. And it's difficult, if not impossible, to manage the limited resources. We have seen firsthand how difficult that can be as we've implemented the recent Novatime time sheet software, a much smaller project compared to the financial system. But at times, staff has struggled to balance the implementation of that software with their daily workload. The financial system, and the real estate system, and the personal property system upgrades are key to the success of Spotsylvania County. And I'm here tonight to update the board on the status of these projects and to also seek the board's acknowledgement that these three projects are a top priority for Spotsylvania County. The financial system was put on hold while staff implemented the new Novatime electronic software. And that, I'm happy to say, the initial phase of that project was recently completed. During that implementation, staff has also been working to develop a new project charter and a timeline for the financial system. Developing a realistic timeline and assigning appropriate resources were two recommendations from consultants to ensure a successful implementation of the financial system upgrade. And in order to accomplish that, we're going to need additional one-time financial support to fund resources in the form of consultants or backfilling so that key staff can focus on the implementation of these projects. We are just beginning to look at these estimates. We're looking individually at each module, at each team member that will be involved, and what we can do to free up their time. Our early estimates are that we may need between one point two and one point five million over two years for four departments, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for each department to do that backfilling. We're not requesting new full-time or part-time staff, but one-time funding for consultants and temporary backfilling to get us through the implementation of these projects. We will continue to fine-tune that estimate. I can promise you, I'm going to do my best to get it as far down as I can. And I will likely come back later during the end of year or the carryover process. It is one, it is a one-time funding need, so we'll probably present that official request at that time. I just wanted you to know in advance what we're looking at as we work through this. These projects are too important to fail. We've been working clearly, working hard to clearly define the objectives and to develop realistic timelines. We feel like we can implement the new real estate system by January of 2019, and we can implement the first phase of the financial system in July of 2019. But that can't happen without that additional support. I also think it's important to mention or to focus on something that Mark noted. We have what I see as a limited window of opportunity to take advantage of the institutional knowledge that we do have here. The knowledge of these, some of these key staff who are either eligible to retire or will soon be eligible to retire will be a huge advantage to the implementation of these systems. And I think we owe it to the citizens to exercise our due diligence to take advantage of those before they're gone. of those before they're gone. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and I respectfully request your support. As I noted, many of the players for these projects are here tonight, and we are more than happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? I think you've got our concurrence to press forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mary, thank you so much. That does bring us to the strategic plan discussion. Wanda's prepared a presentation. I want to pass out some materials while she's getting set up. Thought the board might find informative, a copy of the school division's strategic plan that has been mentioned in discussions of strategic planning along our way. I have also experimented with two very short versions of possible ways forward from here. One is simply called Planning for a Strategic Plan. And the other one operates under the heading, What Is a Strategic Plan? And again, these are just tools as conversation starters. Also want to say, Wanda, before you launch, it's critical, in my mind, of this process, first of all, to come to some focused agreement around what are our goals? And with that, Wanda, if you would please.
The purpose this evening is to talk about a strategic plan. Staff would like to gain insight and direction from the board on a proposed strategic plan -- excuse me, strategic planning process, and determine whether there is overlap with the comprehensive plan update that will begin this summer. Strategic plans can take many forms. In general, they're used to define vision and provide a framework for decisions. The basic strategic planning process is on the screen in front of you. The focus of the effort can be internal, such as in an organization-based strategic plan, or more externally focused on the future of the county. The county's comprehensive plan generally follows the strategic plan outline that you see before you now. Based on comments made by various board members over the last couple of years, and by Mr. Yakubowski specifically on the topic, staff believes there's at least some overlap with the comprehensive plan. Some of the topics that have been mentioned so far include schools, fire stations, libraries, roads, convenience sites, parks and recreation. These have all been mentioned in terms of a strategic planning process. And then also, at one point, Mr. Ross noted that it should be a concise, directed document. The comprehensive plan was adopted in November of 2013. It underwent a major revision at that point in time. It was streamlined, and the focus of it was refined to what was required by the Code of Virginia. Since then, there have been two amendments, both in 2016. One was a thoroughfare plan update, and the other were a scattering of changes necessary related to the proffer law that went into effect. The Code of Virginia does require that jurisdictions review their plans every five years and update as necessary, and the Planning Commission is beginning that process this summer. The current comprehensive plan includes a vision and guiding principles, and if there is overlap in the board's thoughts about a strategic planning process, this may be the perfect location within the comprehensive plan for that strategic plan to sit. It's a short chapter. It's two, three pages long. It has these five guiding principles, as well as strategies to implement those guiding principles. Spotsylvania County is a business-friendly community, and local job creation is a priority. The county is fiscally sustainable. It's a family-friendly community. Agriculture and silviculture are valued components of the county's economy, and that the county values its environmental resources. The guiding principles in the first chapter set the framework and direction for the focused chapters of the comprehensive plan. Since there was a major update during the last update in 2013, staff does not believe that the plan needs a major overhaul. It does need to be looked at as a whole and refinements made throughout the document. The document needs to be relevant and a useful policy document. The land use chapter needs to be reviewed and adjusted as necessary to reflect future desired growth patterns. Several specific areas may desire -- or there may be a desire to include specific area plans for areas that have been the topic of conversation, such as Route 1 north of Exit 126, where there has been discussion of a revitalization plan. The Spotsylvania Station area, looking at the best mix of higher-density uses and staging that area as a potential future station for the high-speed rail. And then the Thornburg area, that's received a lot of attention. How do we set the stage there so that it's most attractive for economic development? The transportation and thoroughfare plan needs updates to reflect a prioritization of transportation projects. That's what we hear most frequently, I think, from the board and the public. We've got a list of projects, but what are the priorities? The Transportation Committee about three years ago did tackle this project, and they ranked projects, and staff and the board have been using those. That's never been adopted as a policy, though, so that does need to be revisited, and I think that it would be good to incorporate that within the comprehensive plan itself. The Public Facilities chapter needs to be reviewed to ensure the levels of service for each facility area are appropriate. An additional effort needs to be paid to future needs planning in this update. This chapter in particular informs the capital improvements plan, and this chapter is critical when we're reviewing projects that are going through a rezoning process. I didn't mention historic and natural resources. Those do need some general updates, but I think those are the two chapters that probably require the least revision. The update approach, the Planning Commission has had some very preliminary discussions about the update. They typically do take the lead in the update process. They mentioned that they would like to take a very active role in this review. They would like to have a series of focused work sessions where they themselves work on the plan. When the plan was updated in 2013, there were committees that were appointed by the Planning Commission to work on the various chapters, and then that work was brought back to the Planning Commission. They would like this time to work on it themselves. There will be public input during the process. A public input plan has not been developed, but some discussion revolved around voting district-based meetings to gather input, as well as having general input meetings once a draft is developed, so then it can be refined. So staff is seeking input from the board on the focus of a strategic plan. Organization-based, growth development-focused, infrastructure, other, a combination, what components of it may overlap with the comprehensive plan. There will certainly be efficiencies in that overlap being brought into the comprehensive planning process. So at this point, I turn it over to the board to provide some thoughts and guidance on a strategic plan and what your goals are.
Mr. Skinner.
Well, I'm going to start off with the infrastructure provision plans that we have. It seems like, I'm not sure how, but with the new plan, SmartScale and stuff of that, to me, my opinion is this, SmartScale is good. But SmartScale doesn't necessarily solve the infrastructure because it is such a long time beat once we're approved to when we get that. And I want to figure out other means, other than just the infrastructure, you know, with SmartScale, to provide what we do need. Now, we do have referendums that we put out for transportation, stuff of that nature. And I think, you know, I'm not saying SmartScale isn't a good thing because we certainly want to use the state money, vice our own citizens' money. But I think we have to approach it as, how do we solve this problem the quickest way that we can to prevent anything, you know? Because the study on Route 1, seriously, we're not going to be able to hold the traffic, I believe. With the study we did in 2024, we're just not going to have that traffic. And I know it's growing. You have the problem on Route 3, and we're trying to prevent it on Route 1. So I need to, you know, that's important to me, is the infrastructure portion of this. And yes, and I'm not sure that in, after the next governor, or who might change in two years after that, is SmartScale going to be the way that the governor wants to go? I mean, it seems like it's so flexible there. We have to have a solid plan in place and be flexible enough to say, okay, this goes away, now we implement Plan B or Plan C. I think that's just really important of what I see up here right now.
Mr. Skinner, I know this is a working session, and I just would throw the comment on there, and I agree with what you say, but the costs of Spotsylvania County doing the infrastructure part is, I think, beyond what our abilities are because transportation costs just seem so outrageous. You know, about the cheapest thing we can get is a stoplight, and it's $300,000, $400,000.
I really understand it, Mr. Chairman, but what I'm seeing too is that we need to, you know, then, you know, I guess what I'm seeing is, we've had referendums before.
We have. We still have one right now.
And we still have them that we can use the money on. And I think we, even if it's our last choice, you know, if there's other ways to pay for these infrastructure programs without doing it from referendum money or stuff of this nature.
I think we need our delegates to get more state money.
Well, no comment, please? Not right now. But anyway, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, let's not leave it out because it is a cost. But when you look at a referendum and the citizens are talking to you, you do, you know, you can respond. It doesn't, it's like a credit card. We don't need to spend all the credit card.
Right.
Limitations, but...
And I get where you're coming, but I'll throw out another example. Like, I would love to see a Harrison interchange on 595, but it's more than our whole annual budget, you know?
Well...
So there's...
But I think what we need to do is see where we can, where it is reasonable. What can we do in a reasonable manner?
And we've been doing that.
You know, and that's what I'm saying. Okay, what's reasonable? I mean, CD roads going all the way down there and coming up to Harrison Road, stuff of this nature. I mean, I think we also have to implement, and we've got to be in FAMPA, we have to grab FAMPA and make them...
We have been. I just caution you because once you go down that path and take responsibility for it, it's, the costs are so high that I don't think we want to take that on. You know, we've always talked about state mandates that come down on us, and the state is providing less transportation funding, I think, than they ever have, and the federal government as well. We just have to be careful going there because it's, like I said, one interchange is the cost of our annual budget for the entire year, so...
Well, I don't want to be, and remember, this is a strategic plan.
Right.
And our goal here is to have different ways to implement that plan, with the goal being better transportation system within our community.
And I think that's a good goal. Mr. Beck?
I think if we're going to go down transportation, we're going to have to pick one project at a time. The multiple projects aren't working, and they're smaller, less significant in improving or, you know, in solving, if there is such a word, for transportation needs. We just need to pick one project, work on it, get it done, and move to the next. I mean, I don't know of any other places to get money but where we have been. Unless we're going to do the tax districts and different things like that, but we're limited on what we can do there, and that's a fiasco in itself.
All right. Not really sure what is going on here. I thought a strategic plan is to deal with what the reality is on the ground. You know, to say that we can't do anything about transportation when we have 7, 8, 10,000 new units coming online in Massaponix and the surrounding area, I think, is shirking our responsibility, especially when it's been voted for. That area down there is a mess. I would challenge anybody to go down there and check out South Point Parkway, try to get from Walmart down to Route 1, and realize that that backs up actually sometimes the Lowe's at Christmas time. So we need a strategic plan to see where we're heading. What we're doing is not working. It's plain and simple. The comprehensive plan is nice, but every rezoning changes the comprehensive plan from what it is to what we might want it to be without the infrastructure to do or to satisfy what we have just done. The lack of, and I know we don't get proffers anymore, but the lack of proffers over the past several years is well over $100 million in capital debt that we know is coming. We have schools, we have fire stations, we have the things that we are responsible for. And we've already taken on the responsibility of doing roads. And we see that the intersection of Harrison and Route 1 is well over $20 million just to do that. But the idea of, you know, for example, what was brought up of having a interchange at Harrison, I mean, that would be nice. Would that be better, or would it be better to have a new interchange? Would it be better to do the J-Ramp or Harrison or the new interchange? And I think that's what we need to get out of the strategic plan, is to get a direction of where we're going. Because bouncing around from one plan to the next to whatever might sound better at the time is not working. Last year, when our fire chief was here, and I asked him when the next fire station is planned, and he said somewhere in the Massaponix Church area road or road area in the next few years at some point. You know, you have land acquisition, you have building time, then you have to fund all of this. How do we know when that is going to be coming online? We have, you know, apartment buildings that are opening up incredibly fast. We have building permits that are being taken out at a speed that we haven't seen in years, and it's only going to continue. And so I think our strategic plan really needs to focus on what are we going to be looking at in the next five years in the short term, 10 years, and then maybe a 20-year plan? Because you can't tell me right now in five years, at a growth rate that we currently have, how many firefighters are we going to need every year to add each and every year? And we need to know, at least with some type of ballpark, what is that number going to be? Because there's a cost associated with that. We just saw a cost associated with our computer systems, another million bucks. And you guys, I'm sure, are going to bring it down below that. But still, that's another cost that is associated, that we have to find the money. And really, when all of these issues sort of meld together, what is there is revenue. And we need to do a better job of finding other sources of revenue that bring in dollars and do not take services, whether it is more when it comes to different types of tourism programs or other things that we can bring people in, let them enjoy, spend their money, pay taxes, and then leave. And then come back, of course. We want them to come back. But we don't want them to take the services, especially when it comes to schools and when it comes to fire and rescue and the other services that we offer and that are necessary. So I would say a strategic plan needs to understand what the lay of the, or what is happening in reality, not what we hope is going to happen, what we're actually seeing. Because back in April, I do believe, we already hit the mark for all of last year of building permits that were pulled. And if that holds up, you know, those types of things are going to constantly affect us. Residential growth does not pay for itself. We see big-box stores going out of business left and right. The old model of relying upon sales tax to cover those costs just don't happen anymore. And if we continue down that road, for some reason, you might think that residential growth is going to pay for itself... is going to pay for itself, then why hasn't Fairfax, Loudon, Stafford, and everywhere else just be rolling in the dough with a lower tax rate than what we have? Because it doesn't. Services cost money. And if we continue doing what we're doing, I, I, I fear that we're going to get caught, or get put into a bind of where things come up, and we're, we're building a school a year, like was happening in the 90s and the 2000s. You know, fire stations, that was a bond referendum in 2002, I do believe, to build fire stations, and it was woefully inadequate to do what we needed to do back then. And think about that, that's 15 years ago, and we have built all these fire stations since then. We have had to play catch-up. The recession actually helped in many ways to slow down the, the demands on county government services, but you still have the needs that are coming into this county. We're not going to stop growing. I don't want us to stop growing, but I want us to grow in the right way, and I want us to understand what that impact is going to be, not only on our budgets, but on our infrastructure and how we're going to be paying for it. So I, I hope that that kind of gives where I'm coming from when it comes to a strategic plan. Stafford, I would say, I, I've pulled theirs up before, they have a, a plan called, it's their something, something strategic plan, it's 88 pages long. Prince William, I know, was having a work session dealing with those, their strategic plan and trying to update it. So I think others have done a lot of the work that we might be able to pull from and see how they're doing it. Fredericksburg has a good one, too. But I think that it's time that we figure out what we are looking at in the next few years, so we know what to expect. Thank you.
I guess I'll, if there's no more comments, I can make a few. I, I see the handouts, and I guess, I don't know if we could get the board's perspective, appreciate. An 88-page strategic plan, I think it's going to be not the best. I've talked about some, talked with the gentleman who's a Cortland citizen that has written strategic plans for the CIA, or in the CIA. And I'd, I'd say five to 10 pages is what we're looking for. I don't, I just bounce that off the board. As well as, I see the, the document planning for a strategic plan, and what is a strategic plan. These look like great, like good starting places for us to go. So I'm not sure if we can look at these, look these over and send input in to Mark individually or collectively, and, and start parsing these out, if that's a way ahead to actually get a work, a strategic plan in, in place. But again, I, I have read through the school's strategic plan, and it's around 30 pages, and it is hard, after reading, to really understand what, what that plan is. Maybe I need to read it again. But I, I think 88 is too much, and so I would, I don't know if the board has any concerns or can discuss a 10-page or a 5-page or less, or what your thoughts are on that, as far as putting a strategy together, that the staff, more of our intentions, and then this, you know, for the staff to then get our intentions and be able to implement those using other kinds of tools. For instance, I, I know a strategic plan could include, I think we all want an efficient government, right? We all want an efficient county government, and part of that implementation could be just the, the new finance system we talked about tonight, that hasn't been updated for 17 years, and in some cases, 1990. So I personally, if there's no more comments, I think the board members should send those things in. And I don't know, Mark, if you have somebody that could take those and kind of put them all together and send them back out, because I'm sure it could be massive, or if anybody has any more things tonight to talk about. Mr. Skinner.
This is on what we've just handed out, I, and this is probably for Mark. Our goal is to create a thriving community. How? Are these just suggestions that were written to us as far as, you know, pursue prospective employers in healthcare, government contract, manufacturing, tourism sections? Are, are these just...
Well, they're not out of the, not out of the blue sky. For example, that list regarding attracting employers, those are the priority economic development targets that have been identified by the board and the EDA previously, and that are consistent with adopted priorities that, that we work every day. So this, that was an example of trying to take guidance documents that are already alive within the organization, and these, I say alive, because they are all changeable, but to try to build those together into a sense, an organization that, that is toward the strategic plan model, by which I mean has identified major goals, and then measures associated with those goals. How do we know that we are getting better? One of the things, from the comments on the transportation infrastructure, it's a question to me, I don't, I don't know whether we have one or can get an existing inventory of failing roads or intersections in the community. I, I think we would like to be, I hope we would like to be ahead of the curve and not going out tomorrow to fix failures, but trying to plan ahead to avoid future failures. But if we have existing failing transportation facilities, then targeting, how are those going to be improved, makes sense. Also, Wanda, I hope I'm not spoiling a surprise, but you did send me today your draft presentation on the special service district for Massponics, which will be coming at the next board meeting, and that is a, an alternate or a non-traditional, at least for our community's history, a non-traditional strategy for funding transportation improvements to mitigate impacts of development at, at Massponics and in that area of the county, which, which is a concern, because I think on the projections, if the, if Massponics builds out and we do nothing, all or many of those facilities will be at service level F. So we need to take some action forward, and the SSD is a, is a vehicle that was agreed by the developers, and one that we are working toward implementing to fund improvements.
Mark, I, you know, what you said is true, but it seems to me we are trying to catch up, rather than be, you know, we're always reactive than proactive on some of these transportation issues. It's not nobody's fault. I mean, just, that's the way that we start, ever since we had, you know, booms here, where Mr. Jakubowski was talking about, a school a year, or we had 1,000 students a year increase in our schools during that timeframe, too. So we did build three schools, I believe, during that time. But I, I think one of the things are, where have we been successful in some of these that we, we have in front of us? And, and I don't need the answer now. You know, again, you're, we've talked about implementing one solution, financial system upgrade and stuff of that nature. I mean, these are great ideas, but what have we done in the past that we've been successful for, successful with? And how can we continue to implement that under, you know, the new smart scale funding, something of that nature? We know we had something to do with Atlantic Gateway, but wasn't that good for, well, it was, in the sense that we were with VRE and were a member of VRE and stuff of that nature. But I'd like to see what we've been successful, and is there anything that we can do to use that success with other categories? I mean, of, of, because why reinvent the wheel if we can do something good in one area, and see if we can't put that into a different category or different means? I, I think the biggest structural we have in the future, the biggest problem is going to be infrastructure, and you just said it. We could have grade F in a lot of our intersectional roads in the future if we don't do something. And we do have some limitations that we have no control over with VDOT and federal highways.
Right, and those really, I mean, it's, it's only been since the Bird Act in the, what, the 30s, the, the state proclaimed for itself responsibility for the roads, and then immediately started not doing enough about them.
Absolutely. So maybe that's one of the things is, what issues do we have that we have no control over, other than, you know, that, that's something that might be interesting to find out? I mean, if we can control an issue, we should be able to at least figure out a time and a process that we can fix that issue, if, if it's a major issue that we can do. And, you know, sometimes we're going to have to end up saying, and biting the bullet and doing what it takes to get it done. That's only my comment on what you said there, so...
Mr. Chairman. I would ask that staff bring back an outline of what a strategic plan could be, because I don't want to get tied up on whatever, how many pages we might have. I think we need to have the material dictate where we go and not be limited. And some of the things with a strategic plan, like I had said, new revenue needed, so we can keep taxes low. We know that commercial growth and sales tax is limited. Meals tax, though, has continued to rise over year over year. Business expansion, transportation, one of the things is, even with the transportation bond referendum in 14, this past year, we didn't do any new bond referendum items. We continued to pay for ones that we had already taken out, but we did not do any new ones. We have parks, fire stations, landfills, libraries, schools. One of the things that Stafford has done is integrated their economic development plan into their strategic plan, which adds to the pages. Incoming revenues, how can we expand upon those? I would also like us to take a look at any taxes that we have in the county. I know that there was a small one, and I forget what it was, and I'll, I'll get the staff on it, that the state has control over, that if we can start lobbying to get rid of some of these silly little add-ons that are out there that really don't do anything except make it more difficult to, to thrive as a business in the county. Also, streamlining processes of what we do. It seems like with the old computer system, there's a lot of manual and man-hours that are needed to do that, and will we then reduce those with the new system? Also, a, a plan, I think, would be necessary, as we have a lot of folks who might be nearing retirement age, of, that is a good time to look at restructuring of the organization in some ways. That is, is, is part of what I think we need to be focusing on. And in addition to that, too, is what we have talked about several times, is the campus master plan, and how that focuses into the overall strategic plan that we have. You know, social services is an example that we always use, that they just don't have any more room for personnel. And so how are we going to tackle all of these issues as they come up? And one of the things that I would like to avoid is having, focusing on one problem and fixing it while the other ones sort of fester, and then they come up as a problem, and then we move resources to that, and take a more balanced approach, so that there's not one portion of the county that is, is falling behind so much that we have to scramble at a certain time just to, just to play catch-up. And so I would ask that at the next board meeting, staff compiles a overall, general outline, and takes a look at the other couple that I had mentioned to see what we might need to put into our strategic plan. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Skinner.
Mark, this, you know, so many times we've said that in the 2005 bond referendum, when we do a bond referendum, we know what the total, I think, I'm not sure what it was in '05, but I know it was like some 20, 22 cents. The '15 bond referendum was about 20, 22 cents. And yet, when we get to the end of 2015 for the bond referendum, the '05, we, we say that we've accomplished it, yet it's only increased our taxes by three cents. So what I'm saying, how have we done that? I mean, you know, what have we put in? What, you know, what of that, of the bond referendum, like in 2005, all the issues we had, how much did we accomplish it? Because it was my understanding that we did it through other means rather than taking it through taxes. And if that's the case, how did we do it? It may have to do a little bit of history back with, you know, Doug or somebody like that, and say, Doug, how did we do that? Because, because I think we should take advantage of, of an issue like that, if, just learn how we did in the past and see if it's still possible doing it the same way this, you know, in the future. So that's all I have, thanks.
Anything else? Okay. I guess that takes us to closed door.
Mr. Chair, this will be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically personnel in the Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management Department. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Leece Hill, Berkeley, and Cortland districts. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically a food manufacturing business, a vehicle sales and traveling, travel lodging business, an expansion of a recreational sports industry, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 37, 3711A1, 3 and 5, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
No move.
Call the question.
A return to open meeting resolution. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Mr. Jakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. Sibula.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
And the chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, which I think is the next item on the agenda, your next meeting is July 11th, 2017, at 4:30 PM. This week, the 2017 U.S. Youth Soccer Region 1 Championships will be from June 30th to July 4th, here at the Spotsylvania Sportsplex, located off of Route 17. Virginia Youth Soccer Association is sponsoring this event, or more than 260 teams, 19 from Virginia. 5,000 players from Maine to Virginia will compete for the Region 1 title. Winners move on to compete in the U.S. Youth Soccer National Championships that'll be held July 24th to 30th in Dallas, Texas. Also, the Stars and Stripes Spectacular is this Saturday. Hope to see all of you there, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM. That's right, July 1st, this Saturday, here at the courthouse. It is free, and it's always free. There's live music on four different stages, children's activities, historic tours, food and business vendors, and fireworks should go off around 9:20 PM. And finally, a reminder to all that July 3rd, in addition to July 4th, our holiday observances this year in the Commonwealth, bless the governor. So county offices will be closed both Monday, the 3rd of July, and Tuesday, the 4th of July, in honor of Independence Day. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, please, I just want to, in your package that you received tonight, you do have all the passes, the VIP pass, to come to this event, and they've welcomed you all there.
Okay.
For the board members.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, call the question.